Good afternoon. It is four o'clock and I'd like to welcome everyone to our November work session. It is November 8th at 4:00 PM. It is also Election Day, so we have a lot of great things going on today. Is there, there's an agenda in front of us and I know there is a recommended change to the agenda. I need a motion for the recommended change to move the AP STEM Computer Science Initiative to the front of the order of presentation and discussion items.
So moved.
A. So moved by Mr. Cleveland, second by Ms. Morrissey. All in favor? The agenda is approved as is with the motion to make the amendment.
Oh, a move that we approve the agenda as amended.
As amended, yes, as amended, sorry. As amended with the move of the AP STEM. If we could please stand for the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, for liberty and justice for all.
All right, so the first item on our list is the AP STEM Computer Science Initiative with Mr. Drew Hayes and Representative Todd Jones.
That worked.
That works.
Hey, y'all, I'm Drew, in charge of ACE. This whole brainchild is Representative Jones's and Dr. Bearden's in terms of a larger conversation that took place. Literally, I got an email, I believe it said, "Leann and Drew, make this happen." And there were some notes down at the bottom, if I'm remembering, and I was trying to figure out what the notes meant and some of these other things and make some calls. But it became a larger initiative that has produced some tremendous success and I think has helped us to become, Dr. Bearden says every time we're either getting better or we're getting worse, there's no status quo. This has forced us to look at how we can do a better job for everybody that we touch and also to really look at how we do everything we do because once the bandwidth goes from here down the road, it's one thing when it goes all across the state. If it's off, it just doesn't work. So I would like Representative Jones to talk about his vision and then I'm going to thank a few people and let my team tell you what they've done.
Thank you, Drew. And the bandwidth comment, that's not a pun. It really is about getting it across all 159 counties, 180 school districts. First of all, thank you very much to the board and to the superintendent. I appreciate you not requiring me to be in a tie. Typically, in times like this, I have to be completely formal and I even have sneakers on, so thank you. But in all seriousness, I was asked to give you and I'm assuming whoever's listening tonight or today, why? Because you always want to know the why behind what it is that we're trying to do. And the entire thought process around what can we do to increase access and rigor across the state really came about because of a dinner that I had with a certain university president. And that university is located in Atlanta, so you really, you know, and it's a public university and it possibly specializes in technology. And what I asked him was very simply during the dinner, I asked him, I said, "Hey, walk me through your entering class. I guess you got a bunch of 1600s," referring to the SAT. And he says, "Well, as a matter of fact, we turned down," I think he said, "10 or 11 1600s." So for those of you listening at home, if you're a student, it is about being well-rounded and not just getting a 1600. But I was really, and we got into a conversation around the entering class, who was given admission, et cetera, and I said, "Hey, just out of curiosity, think south of Macon, Georgia." And he says, "Sure." And I go, "Outside of the valedictorians and salutatorians, which as you know, tech admits all of them automatically, how many folks got admitted south of Macon?" And he says, "Well, I'm disappointed to say zero." And that was the light, that was the motivation immediately. I left that dinner and all I could think about was birthright should not give you, in a sense, the right or the ability to go to Georgia Tech, Georgia State, University of Georgia, North Georgia, West Georgia, you name it, but rather every child should have the opportunity that they have here in Forsyth. I have four children who went through the entire Forsyth Public School System and never once was there ever a thought of, do they have access and do they have rigor? But yet, you speak to Eccles County, you speak to Lanier County, you speak to Ware County, two of my favorites, coffee and bacon, and you start to realize, they don't have what we have. We are blessed in so many different ways. When I'm at the Capitol, I'm constantly told, "Todd, you have Forsyth problems." And granted, in some ways, they're right, but in other ways, they're not. But in my mind, it was our responsibility, or at least our calling, what could we do to help the 180 school districts, specifically probably around 100 school districts? So thank you to Dr. Bearden, and I mean that, I like to say that publicly. I got ahold of Dr. Bearden and I said, "Here's our challenge. We can't get enough STEM teachers to move into South Georgia, North Georgia, the county, pardon me, the ocean side, the east side, and in some parts of the west side. What is it that we could possibly do?" And the brainstorming came around to the idea of, "Let's bring access to them." And access to them meant, would that be something that we would possibly be able to do out of Forsyth? And then also happens to be out of Cherokee, which we did, and we appreciate the cooperation there. So those two counties came together and in my mind created the supply, but of course then we needed the demand. And I think that you're going to hear and what's going to be happening in terms of the pilot and what's the demand that we saw. And really, for me, this was, is there demand? Can we create supply? And I don't want to give Dr. Bearden a heart attack, but can we completely create scale? Can we take this pilot and literally say, "We're going to create enough scale that no child, no child in any of the 180 school districts will ever have to say, 'I didn't get computer science, I didn't get calculus, I didn't get physics, I didn't get AP, I didn't get this, I didn't get that' because of where I was born, where my parents live.'" You shouldn't have to choose between X and Y. X and Y should be at all 180 school districts. And I think what you guys are doing is truly the work that needs to be done in order to show that some of the things that you say, and I know that I say it to my four children, I'm sure all of you do too. You have a choice in life. Do you want to be a giver or do you want to be a taker? Every day, you have a choice. Do you want to give or do you want to take? I know there's some times that you got to take because life hits you a little bit bad and, you know, sometimes the community gives to you. But in the net, you got to be asking yourself, are you a net giver? And I think right now, the Forsyth County School Board and through the Rooker Drews, and I know you're going to introduce the team, you're showing that. So I wanted to say thank you again to Dr. Bearden, thank you to you guys, because without you, there is no giving. And I'm telling you right now, this is going to be the foundation of truly fundamentally changing the state of Georgia, the education system in Georgia, and maybe even one day through the other 49 states in the Union. So thank you very much.
Okay, it's really hard to follow up after that. Thank you, Representative Jones, for your vision. I've got a list of people I'm going to thank and then I'm going to introduce the other folks so they can talk about what they did. Dr. Bearden, thank you for setting this up and believing that all of these things were possible, also in making it clear that we were supposed to create virtual here so that it was the best that any kid could have available from day one, and that's what we've been trying to do. The board, thank you all for having the vision pre-COVID to understand we had to lead in this area, sticking with it and making sure that we got the resources we need to through COVID so that we could continue to move forward and then understanding that virtual education is part of the direction that everybody needs to go and what needs to happen. This doesn't happen without leadership. Thank you for you guys' leadership. I want to thank Leann Rice and Heather Gordy for being my sounding board when we were trying to figure this out, because I understand I got put on a Zoom call with about 30 people and like I had to figure out how to build consensus. And so I talked through each step with them. They listened to me, gave me feedback and helped set us up for success down the road. So thank you to them for that. To Dr. Salomon, HR, to making sure that I had the right people and could have the people necessary to make all of these things happen. Also, need to thank the SIS department, Kathy Carpenter, Pam Gunn, and Lisa Venable specifically for the fact that these kids aren't in our school system. So we had to figure out, what data do we need so they can be enrolled, so they can work in our system without compromising their privacy or compromising hours? Like, this was not a small thing and they did a lot of work to make that happen. Same thing with Mike Evans, Kurt Godwin, and Jason Nail on the other side, because a lot of my conversations were, well theoretically that would work, but like we had to figure out how to make it work. I couldn't just live in the theoretical. Dr. Valerie Lowe for the fact that computer science, in my opinion, is one of the most important things we can provide to children and the fact that she is championing and working to make sure we have enough certified people to provide that. There is a new rural educate, rural Department of Education and Innovation at the state that was brand new. The head of that is Dr. Bronwyn Reagan Martin. She is, she calls me, like she has, she has been fantastic and wants to see this succeed. And April, Dr. April Aldridge was her right-hand person, making sure that happened. I want to thank the five school systems who partnered with us, who were willing to take the risk to try this when, in most cases, they were like, "We don't even know what you're talking about," as we went to proceed. I'd like to thank Gary Davidson at Lambert, Sahil Sud, and Jason Eben at Hype because they are truly innovative young people who have their own not-for-profit to help take care of kids and tutor kids, and they wanted to be part of this project. And then finally, the people who have done 98% of the work. Phil Lyerly, my assistant principal, who's been the one who's been on phone calls with people left and right to make sure that things worked and everybody had what they needed. PK Graff, who is doing high school computer science, and then CB Rykoski, who's doing middle school computer science. Understanding staffing issues and things came into play with all of this as well. We left in June thinking we knew who we were going to be talking about to set this project up, and when we got our first phone calls in July, the vast majority of those people had either left that school system or there was another person in the role or they had shifted somewhere else. So we had to regroup to just get things up and running. But we are very, very pleased with where we're sitting. And so without further ado, I'm going to let my team of three here walk up and speak to you guys. Thank you all very much.
Thank you guys so much for having us. Get a couple slides ahead here. Again, we really appreciate everything that you guys have allowed us to do. One of the things that I'm going to talk a little bit about is how we made this work. So generally speaking, from the get-go, we were started, we started to talk about AP courses and that kind of thing, but then had to take a step back and realize that the counties, the kiddos weren't ready for AP yet, so we wanted to start with computer science to kind of build that. So essentially, the way that we started this is, came up with the idea of, okay, we need to create some computer science courses. Those courses largely were created by these guys and are being provided by FVA teachers. The way that the counties have partnered with us is they have facilitator teachers in the school building. So we have anywhere between five and 20 students that are sitting with those teachers. They'll come in, they'll log in, and then they're taught through some of the asynchronous and synchronous components of our courses. So they actually get to talk to our teachers. One of the very interesting things, and Mr. Hayes was able to kind of allude to this, but we are funneling these students through our system, so they're logging in through ClassLink, just like our students would, and they have access to everything that our students would. So that's really cool. And on top of that, they're accessing their courses through Canvas, which is going to be our new LMS. So that, in a sense, also is part of the pilot. So we do have five counties. We have them highlighted on this. We have Decatur, Macon, Miller, Seminole, and Taylor. So there are three middle schools and four high schools that are participating in this. And then throughout the rest of the year, throughout the entire school year, we will have been able to serve approximately 150 students in this. So we are really excited about that. So in terms of creating the courses, we didn't want to have this myopic vision of what a course should look like. Of course, we have a very good understanding of what a good virtual environment looks like, but we wanted to bring some other people in. So we brought in some other folks from around the county, people who specialize in computer science, and were able to build these courses together. So we do have four teachers that are teaching or facilitating computer science for the very first time, some of which are learning as they go to become certified, to be able to then offer that at their base school in South Georgia. And we also have one that is creating the content for the first time, which is a very new process. So as we're going through and teaching the students, this is a perfect opportunity for us to not only teach others, but also to learn as well. So through that, I'm going to let Ms. Rykoski explain a little bit more.
So this is the middle school computer science course in Introducing Snorkel Horse. He is the main character throughout the course, and the whole point is for it to be fun and engaging and approachable for that young age group. So we thought about how do we make it look cool and make the projects really cool? So the way it's themed is based on career types. So it's not just Chapter One, it's, "You're a web developer or you're a game designer." And so getting them to create. And here's some examples of work that the kids have already produced, like a website, like an app. They have a portfolio, they make digital art. So it's a really fun process to watch, and our kids in Forsyth County are getting the exact same curriculum. And you all are getting your own snorkel horse sticker, like the students did in rural Georgia, and it says, "Snorkel Horse, if you know, you know, and now you know." PK will tell you about high school.
Awesome. So in the high school course, our primary focus is on, our primary focus for the course is to build efficacy in programming skills along with just general computer science knowledge. And so one of the easiest ways into a student's vision, if you will, is where they're digital natives. And so if I ask you the question, if you were to be in a group of students and ask them, "How many of them play video games?", what do you think the results would be? All? Everyone? Pew Research tells us that statistically, you're going to look at around 90 to 95% of those students are going to be video game players. And so my course that I built helps guide them through project-based learning, focusing especially on creation, so that they can grow from being passive consumers to active producers. I do not have a mascot, because in my course, each of them make their own mascot. You can see one of them shaking around the screen here. That is a little game sprite that my students make. Part of the creation is they write a narrative, so they write a story, and then that story has a main character and they actually have to design that main character themselves. Cool.
Interesting that it involves the writing aspect as well. I like that.
Absolutely.
So alongside all of this tutoring, or all of this education, we felt that there was a need to help support the students that may not have had as much experience with computer science, or this may be their first time interacting with a computer science curriculum in the first place. And that's where myself and my colleague Jason stepped in. We are co-founders of a nonprofit organization called Hype that aims to promote community sustainability. And one of our core pillars is education, because we feel that effective education, especially in vocational and STEM fields, is crucial to positioning students for the future, so that they're able to make strides in their career and get the skills that are well in demand in the job field. So what we set up essentially was a tutoring network, taking a cohort of students from Lambert High School initially, but we have plans to expand as the program grows, of students with a wealth of knowledge in computer science, ones that would be able to take the knowledge that they've learned in the Forsyth County School System and give it to those that may not have as many resources or as much experience with computer science. So as of the status quo, we're pending some approvals from some of the rural counties to initiate a lot of this tutoring. We have the infrastructure set up logistically through softwares like Microsoft Bookings, and we're looking to begin working, especially in second semester, with a new cohort of middle school students, to begin implementing this tutoring initiative as soon as all of the approvals are cleared. But in the meantime, our organization has been assisting with a lot of the events with Forsyth Virtual Academy on more of the local level, helping some of the K-5 students with similar STEM and computer science education at some of our hands-on events. And we hope to take this forward. Like Representative Jones said, this is something that has tremendous power to drive tangible change within our community. And we're glad to be a part of that and we hope this is something that we can continue to work on for years to come.
What, Raider Jr.?
We are seniors at Lambert High School, ma'am.
Both of you, huh? Very.
Considering current education by any chance?
Speaking.
Speaking. Speaker.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you. I appreciate it.
I don't know, like if you guys think about what you have done, you have taken legislators, school administrators, teachers, and organizations, private organizations, to come together for one initiative, and that's huge. I don't know if people don't realize that, but that is big. And I don't think anybody a year ago, maybe a year and a half ago, would have thought that you would be educating students three and a half, four hours away and making an impact in that community. So it kind of gives you like goosebumps, you know?
Well, it's really weird for me, because I was in computer science at Georgia Tech. I know what it looked like back in the late 70s. Even in early 2000s, when I sat with the dean of computer science at Georgia Tech and started pushing his buttons, because I didn't see any change from the late 70s to early 2000. I think what we're going to do here is start pushing them to increase and maybe make better their program, to make better scientists at the end of it, coming out into the workforce. I think it's going to do wonders.
Can you imagine computers in the 70s?
I didn't bring my deck of cards. It was either paper tape or deck of cards.
Any other board members have any questions or comments for any of the team that presented?
I just think it's fantastic.
I just wish I could have done it.
Representative, don't talk about bandwidth. So I'm just curious, when we, in connecting up with the rural counties, as far as, did they have the necessary equipment on their end and also just literally the bandwidth as far as, as they're dialing into our system and accessing us, is what they need there? And as, you know, we have 150 students coming into our end, we need to have access here? And all, there is logistics there and literally bandwidth, is that a challenge?
One of the, one of the issues or one of the things that we address, both Carrie Beth and myself, in our courses, is we build our curriculum and content to be delivered at the lowest technology available. Essentially, my course and I think yours as well can be delivered on any Chromebook. And bandwidth is, is a fair, like the literal sense of bandwidth is very minimal. The requirement's very small, and that's intentional. Having them routed through our SIS was pivotal for that. The delivery of a virtual course relies heavily on, you know, communication through the computer, and, you know, that lens that you have can be limiting in many aspects. You know, live streaming, for example. We have not, I have not experienced, and I don't think you have either, experienced any issues with that, doing live sessions with the classes. In fact, I don't know if Steve Hahn is in here. We were gifted some computers from School Safety, the old driving simulators, and I used those driving simulators, if you ever saw them. They're kind of hideous black boxes. I turned them into beautiful gaming PCs, and the way that I did that is I taught the rural students how to build computers using those and rebuilding them with them in live streams and never had any issues with that. So hopefully that addresses your question.
From an overall standpoint, Wi-Fi for some of those families in that area would be the biggest obstacle, could we could see in terms of what is there? They can access everything in school, they have all their locations that they can go. That was probably the biggest thing that we saw, that we needed the rest of it, we were able to work out. This, in my mind, is more of a people issue than it is a device or an equipment issue.
And the Wi-Fi is a problem that we've worked through over the years and we've kind of overcome that, so that's something that the rural counties hopefully will eventually master. I know that that's something the General Assembly is well aware of and working on. Okay, thank you.
And that's something that Carrie Beth and I also do, is professional development with those teachers. So I think it's been said, but bears repeating, is that it's a people issue. Mr. Hayes has alluded to that. And providing professional development to these teachers, not only giving them the curriculum and the content, but also the efficacy to be able to deliver it on their own going forward. Now we're like raising the capacity of the entire state, using this pilot as a platform to say, "This is possible and this is how we think it should be done."
Probably helps with their retention a little bit down in that areas too, I would think, just a little bit of morale boost for them as well.
And I would just add, you know, my very first superintendency was in northern, very rural Maine, and even back in those days, the issue of resources was very real for us. It wasn't the same as you would have like in the Portland area. And so when Representative Jones reached out to me about this possibility, it certainly resonated with me because I struggled with that as a superintendent. And I just feel it's incumbent upon all of us. And what I so respect and appreciate about your leadership is while Representative Jones does represent Forsyth County, he is a champion for students throughout the state of Georgia. And if anything we can do to try to help make that happen and deliver quality education to kids throughout our state, I think we have a responsibility to do so. And so when I talked to Drew about this, I mean, granted, I did ask him to make it happen, but I knew he would make it happen because I knew he had also had the heart to make it happen. And he's got such a great team at ACE. And Forsyth Virtual is incredible, what we're able to do there and the resources and the leadership and support. And then we had students reach out to us and say, "Hey, we heard about this. How can we help? How can we help other students throughout the state of Georgia?" And I thought, man, this is just a beautiful synergistic, synergistic thing we have going on here, where everybody's working together. And I think this is going to continue to grow and expand. We are more than willing, if you need us to, to go speak and talk about how we're trying to make this happen. I'm sure the folks in Cherokee County would do the same thing. Brian Hightower, the superintendent there, is also behind this 100% and we're willing to help. Thank you so much for your leadership, and I know this is a busy day for you, so thank you for carving out some time to spend with us. We appreciate it. Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Great job, guys.
Great job.
All right, the next item on our discussion list is the Finance Advisory Committee with Jeff Bearden.
Okay, thank you. Back, oh, I guess this summer, Larry Hamel, our Hamel, our Chief Financial Officer, and I decided it would probably be a good time to pull together a citizen financial advisory committee to take a look at the finances in Forsyth County schools. I asked you guys to make recommendations on who you thought might be best to serve on that committee. We invited a number of people. We had our initial meeting last month. But the purpose of the committee is quite, is quite simple. We just want to make sure we're meeting your goal that you've set as a board, to continue to have effective and efficient financial planning. And you guys know this, and I shared with our committee, and we have several of them here today, and I'm going to have them introduce themselves in just a second, but we, we're AAA bond rated, we, we've had that for years, we're proud of that. We're one of only 17 systems in the entire nation to be AAA bond rated. We're five out of five stars on financial efficiency, but as Drew said earlier, we're always looking, how can we improve? You know, how can we get better? And we thought, if we just brought in some citizens who have an expertise in finance to work with us and take a look at what we're doing, maybe there are some areas where we can improve and get even better. And so I was so pleased with our first meeting, so I think we have five or six here tonight. I would ask, if you're a part of the Finance Advisory Committee, if you could all please stand to begin with. And if you don't mind, I would like for you to introduce yourself, tell us who you are and where you work and your job title, and maybe if we just start with you and work our way left to right.
I'm Polly Wade. I am a CPA. Worked for a public accounting firm before having kids and then starting a business with my husband. Do an architecture and design firm, production company, and we run from here, and then we have three children in the system. And I'm here because I'm incredibly grateful for what Forsyth County has done for my family. Started asking a couple of questions, and I feel like asking questions is a great way to volunteer yourself for committees. So there I am, and I'm happy to serve. Already met with Larry, learned a lot about budgeting and just happy to contribute however I can.
Thank you, Polly. And if any of you want to make any comments about our first meeting, feel free to do so as well. Yes, please.
Lawrence Rockstein. Let's see, I've got three children. Two of them have gone through Forsyth County Schools, kindergarten through 12th grade, and I've got one still in ninth grade, for sure. So, let's see, grew here in 1998. Been the financial services business for about 18 years. I've owned investment management business in town. So I was asked if I would participate in this, and I thought it was a great idea. Happy to help out, glad to be here.
Thank you very much.
Juan Raza. I, I'm from the Hispanic side of the community, and I have two kids. My daughter graduated from Denmark a couple of years ago. She was the first promotion, graduated from Denmark. And my son, he's a ninth grader right now at Denmark. So I love the system, I love the Forsyth County schools. I'm part of the Desana LSE. I've been there for probably more than it should. It's supposed to be only a two-year period. I've been there for almost four.
That's what happens when you get good ones.
Well, this year I decided to stay on the, on the LSE. I volunteered myself to stay one more year, even though my daughter, my son already departed Santa, because I'm the representative of the Hispanic community that we have on council that we have in the Santa. But because of the COVID, we couldn't meet for almost two years.
Right.
So there's no Hispanic. So there's no Hispanic, uh, council right now. So we're working on rebuilding that council so next year I can, uh, transfer deposition to somebody that actually be part of the system. Um, I'm a real estate agent. I'd always been working on product development, sales, so financials are not that strange to me. And with Chris's approach to me, to volunteer me for this committee, I, I think that was a perfect segue to give back to, to the school system that has helped me and my family tremendously.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Vera and, uh, I'm a technologist. I'm a chief technology officer at a IT company and, uh, have two children in the Forsyth County School system, one in high school and one in elementary. So I'm really glad that I'm involved and, uh, thank you for having to do this.
We appreciate all of you, uh, volunteering. Oops, sorry, I didn't see you in the back.
Chris Brown, I'm a senior vice president, uh, charging commercial lending for Renaissance Bank. Been a citizen of Forsyth County since two thousand twelve. I have a graduate, R and D and G, and I have two others, a senior at Lambert, a sixth grader at South Mill. And I thought the first meeting was, uh, was great. Did a good job of kind of showing, uh, the great things that the county, uh, has to do with this system going forward. Hopefully utilizing some of that experience and, uh, help.
Once again, thank, thank you all very much for being here. And, and you do know it's volunteer, right? We made that clear. Okay, great. We, we actually are meeting again in December. We have, we have our second meeting coming up. I believe we had ten attend the first meeting and then so far, I think eight out of the ten had said, yes, I'm, I'm committed. I'm going to stay a part of this. And so I just so appreciative of the fact that you guys were willing to volunteer and work with us and look forward to meeting with you out throughout the course of the remainder of the year. And thank you so much for being here this afternoon.
Yes.
I know you didn't have to do this, but I really appreciate it. Any questions, comments from board members?
No, I would say, looking at the list, I know a few other names on here. Jeff Stevens, for example, actually sat in my seat.
Yeah.
He was a previous board member for my district and so he and I have been connected for a long time and I reached out when I heard he was going to serve and thanked him for his service. But, you know, this is how you serve with the community. I mean, I started at Big Creek LSC and PTA and coming along and, and doing things at the district level is important to take it back to your local school. So I appreciate y'all's time.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think it's just another resource for us and we're so thankful for to have you because it is complicated, you know? There's so much with it, with finances and education in a whole. And so, uh, having you guys part of it and having the expertise, looking at it is, uh, perfect. So thank you to you and thank you to Dr. Bearden for willing to do it.
I hope that they ask questions so that we can see what we might be able to explain better, you know, just from their perspective. Sometimes we are so used to the language that we use that, you know, they'll ask questions from their perspective and we can better, you know, communicate to the public, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Our next item on the list is our twenty twenty-three legislative priorities with Jennifer Crotlo.
Good evening. What you have before you are the draft legislative priorities that, um, we had submissions from board members and also from cabinet members. And so we will come back to you next week for approval for these, but very briefly, um, probably our biggest chunk right now is on student supports. Uh, Sarah Taylor and her team did a wonderful job going through what the current QBE funding formula is, what we have at Forsyth County Schools, and then also what the national recommendations are. So you can see all of the different supports that we have for counselors, psychologists, school nurses, and what we would like to recommend to our local delegation. In addition to that, another student support that we have comes out of school safety and those are our student advocacy specialists, which you know have been very popular, not only in the state of Georgia, but in the southeast. Governor Kemp has actually taken a great deal of interest too in the student advocacy specialists. But as you know, those are all locally funded. So one of the things we would like to ask is some state funding for those positions. You heard Dr. Salome speak last month about what we're doing as a school system to, um, help our employee recruitment and retention. And so one of the areas we do, we would like, um, more partnership from our state is to provide full funding for QBE and to ask for consideration for a cost of living adjustment for educators to keep pace with inflation. And the very last thing that we are requesting is state transfer, is, um, student transportation. As you know, whenever you go to the gas pumps, your bills have increased and so have ours whenever we're transporting, um, with almost four hundred buses across Forsyth County. So one of the areas that we would like to request is more funding from the state, um, to ensure an equitable state and local partnership to get our students safely to and from school. So if you have any recommendations or any additions to this, to this list of, um, proposals, please let me know.
And let me just add, uh, this will be on the agenda next week for your vote, so we have a week to talk about it, if there's anything you want to see amended or added. I will say, this will be consistent throughout the state of Georgia. As I talked to colleagues and other organizations like Georgia School Boards Association, Georgia School Superintendents, uh, Georgia Association of Educational Leaders, they, that these four have popped consistently, uh, throughout our state. And I think that'll be good for our delegation to hear when we meet with them in December as they prepare for the upcoming session. But any-
Sometimes people think and they start putting their list together and it gets real long. But the reason we have such a few items is we really want to point out the big ones and get those to the top of the list and make them very focused, uh, with our legislative delegation and work with them.
That, that's a great point. I mean, you, you could come up with a, a list twenty pages long and then it just gets lost. And so our goal is always to make them as clear and concise as we possibly can and really talk about the priorities.
These priorities aren't ranked in priority, are they?
They're not.
Oh, but if you'd like, I could reorder them.
No, no, I just wanted to make sure because I think that's a question we'll get.
Well, I think this list, I think we went into it a little bit better this year. You know, for example, our school safety, but asking for the student advocacy specialist, we know, we thought, you know, everybody always asks for more counselors, which we know is an important topic, but we know that we can go to our delegation and they're aware of our SASs and that we have the data to show that we've been running that program for years and we've been paying, five years now roughly?
About five years.
We have eight, I believe.
Eight, right.
So we have the data to show the results and we've got skin in the game and we believe in that not, we're not just asking for us. We think that should be statewide and we know that other school systems like Fayette have duplicated, they have three now. So we're saying that we think this should be here and other, other places. And by having school safety advocates, that lightens the load on our normal counselors. So it, it's a, it has a ripple effect. So we think that specifying that, we have the data to prove that we've been doing this and we've had skin in the game. So it's not a new ask. It's something that we have proved for. So I think that's a valid ask. And when we talk about councils or nurses, this is something that we've been funding locally for years. We have forty-four schools. We fully fund nurses in all of our schools. So we have in our high school of twenty-five hundred, three thousand students, we have one nurse who's serving all of those students. And that's an awful lot of work for one person to do every single day.
And the staff members too in that building.
What's that?
They also support the staff members too in that building.
Yeah, you know, I got to say, I, I know we, we need to move on, but I went through an LSC today and I never quite realized how much a nurse does in a school. I mean, you think about an elementary school and it's kind of obvious, you think, if you ever had to stay home from work during, during the day to take care of your one child, you know how much work that is, but think about for an elementary school. But the high school, I never quite realized all that was involved for a high school level. And there's obviously the aches and pains and upset stomachs. But the, uh, the high school nurse today was telling me some of the things that she does. They have the special ed students. They have students that are in feeding tubes that they have to feed. They also have diabetic students that they help take care of. I guess that we have a new program where they, if parents have proved that they have a new problem, it's a new, it's called Dexcom, where they can actually monitor students that are diabetic with the parent's permission so they can see their levels. And if they go low, they can call the student in and help give them sugar or whatever they need. They have students that have daily medication that they have to come in and they take care of. They obviously have paperwork they have to do for all the students that have things like Obuterol or, um, EpiPens. This year with the changes in meningitis for eleventh graders, they have five, six hundred students, they have to remind that if you're an eleventh grader, if you're going into college, you got to do that. They said the amount of counseling they do. The one comment, I saw one that she said today that she goes, I see these children. She goes, I see everything. I see the whole child. So it's not just whatever they're upset about. She goes, I have to figure out why they're having a stomach ache. It's not usually just a stomach ache, it's usually stress or anxiety. So she's like, I'm a nurse and it's just not about medicine, it's about what's going on with them. And I was just, I was just so amazed. She goes, it's just so much more work than you realize. And that's one nurse for twenty-five hundred students in a given day.
So you forgot to add that they were our workhorse during COVID. They got the, the task of every school. They were the ones to point in contact for every school. And so, I mean, you're right.
And that's one thing that Nurse Heidi talks about is, you know, as technology and medical advances, then you can ta, you can take your COVID test at home. So you're not following up then with your healthcare provider or your doctor, you're following up then with your school nurse. So, so the school nurse was in that role too as well for assisting for what was going on in the homes.
It was, the last thing she said was, I love my job.
A lot of people think they've been around forever, but no. In the late nineteen nineties, I remember Big Creek, when I was on PTO, we funded a half a nurse because we saw it was needed. People were bringing their meds to school and the kids were keeping them or giving them to the secretary.
Yeah.
And that's who was, the nurse was the secretary. So we've come a long way, but we're still not there.
And all our nurses are certified too, which does set us apart from other school systems.
Yeah. But I just, I want our delegation to hear these things. They just need to-
Absolutely.
I can't imagine the rural systems that don't have the ability to fund that themselves. Can't imagine.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item on our list is the twenty-four, twenty-five school calendar draft with Mitch El.
All those overworked nurses and staff members, it's important to have breaks built in throughout every month of the year, which brings us to the calendar. Is this the wrong? Try this again. There we go. Okay, so a month ago, we shared with you the timeline for the calendar and showed you the first draft. Really, it was the first draft one point two because we had taken some feedback even prior to showing that to you. But we are still on track for our timeline, so we are down at eleven eight where I'm presenting what I hope is the final version of the twenty-four, twenty-five school calendar. Just want to review these real quickly. These were put out to the public as well, but these are the considerations that we've got to have, a hundred and seventy-eight school days, a hundred and ninety teacher days. We try to balance them the best that we can between first and second semester. We try to have all of our students done by Memorial Day. And please, as a reminder, we put out to the parents, if you want to come up with suggestions and tinker with the calendar, that's fantastic, but every time you remove it there, you got to add it to the other side of the ledger. And so, uh, and the feedback, we got a lot of feedback between our LSC and principals and the community feedback, you know, it was, it was right around a thousand responses that we got. So we, we got a lot of, uh, a lot of things shared back with us. Not all of them take into consideration all these bullet points, but, but that's okay. If you recall, I shared this with you last time from the, the initial calendar that I shared with cabinet and the LSC. They made a couple of changes right out of the gate. Uh, I got picked on for my poor drawing skills on this, but these were the changes that we made originally, where they wanted, uh, the twentieth to be considered for early release so that teachers would have a half a day to, to wrap things up for the year and with, with grades and, and classroom cleanup and that sort of thing. The other thing the LSDs and our staff had looked at was, we had originally looked at February the fourteenth being a, um, uh, a professional learning or an online learning day. We looked at both of those and they ex nayed that, said that has traditionally become a long weekend that, that's needed in February for our families and our staff. So we put that back in. So that was, I shared that with you last time we were here. That has not changed. But to kind of summarize the, the feedback, four big kind of groupings, if you would, came into the four things you see there. A lot of concerns or complaints, um, and conspiracy theories perhaps, that we're moving to a year-round school calendar. Um, and this is just my second year of doing this and this is the second year that I get bombarded with that. I'm going to address that in just a second, but that, this early start date of August first really, really set that on fire in terms of feedback. There was, um, a, a lot of suggestion for adding religious and cultural holidays throughout our calendar. I'll just address that one right here, that when you look at our calendar, none of them are tied to a specific religious holiday or cultural holiday. The, the holidays we take off are, are generally tied to federal holidays that have to do with, with, uh, US history, um, that, that have become a part of American culture, if you will, through the years. But really, when you look at those strategically, they're taken advantage of those, those national holidays because they come at, at times where we're pretty much at that point where our folks need a break and our students need a, a break in the action. They break up the months for us. Uh, so I've made that joke at the beginning, but that is important to have some of those breaks built throughout the year. So the, the third box, uh, there that you see is increased use of online learning days. There was a fear that we were going to continue to add to those. We had added a couple of those. Um, the feedback was not overwhelmingly positive about that. And then there was a lot of feedback, not just from teachers and staff, but from the community as well, that our teachers should, we should do everything we could to try to have them done by Memorial Day. So here, uh, here's what I want to say to address the first question about the year round school and the early start. This is a list of all of our start days going back to, to the fifteenth, and that's when we began our, our Thursday start to the school year so that we have those two days and get the kids sort of re-acclimated to a, to a schedule and that sort of thing. But when you look at this, it, it, we have stuck consistently with that. We have not moved the start date up. It's just where the calendar falls every year. Um, that, so there's no, I'm, I'm just saying that for the record, there's no insidious-
So it's the same as two thousand nineteen?
It's, it, two thousand nineteen, thousand twenty, that's correct. Yep. The one year we have, the, the later start was the twenty twenty-one school year because of the pandemic. If you recall, we pushed everything back a week to get ready for our online learning. Um, and if, if we were to continue with the, with the pattern that we've done of the, of the Thursday, the first Thursday of August as the start date, then, then in twenty-five, twenty-six, that actually goes back to, to August seventh and that'll cycle back, back through again as the years go on. So just wanted to put that out there. I had shared that specifically with some emails that I got, but I, I think it's important for the community to see that out there. Um, and again, uh, there were several suggestions that we not start until after Labor Day. Um, I'm a transplanted Yankee, like, like some of those that self-proclaimed transplanted Yankees in the, in the feedback, that, that don't like starting before Labor Day, but that is part of moving to the South. This is when school starts here traditionally and, um, you know, so we've just got to reschedule those weddings and family reunions for July.
When, when they do that, I mean, as a Yankee?
Yeah.
When is it over?
Uh, mid, mid-June.
Mid-June.
It, it's usually about June fifteenth or somewhere, somewhere there. So it's, I, I even looked at the weather that, you know, because one of, one of the concerns is about how hot it is getting off of the bus, um, in June. I, I, and I, I shouldn't say this without having specifics from it, but I want to say the, the average temperatures in mid-June are eighty-five to eighty-six. And when you look at the August dates, it's eighty-nine. So it's not like a, a ten degree difference, it's two or three degrees.
But we also had to get the content done for the AP exams as well. So if we start too late, we're not going to have the content done. And that's really important as well.
That's a great point. That's a great point. Yep. Okay, so those, again, those are sort of the parameters that we used and that's why we have the August start date. And, and y'all, I am not, I, I do not believe for any reason, based on the success that we've had as a school system over the last 10 to 15 years, but certainly in the last 10 years, that the breaks that we have, I actually think are an important part of, of the success that we've had. We, we've got very timely breaks in there, important for staff retention and recruitment, having those breaks built in, but also for the, for the wellness of our students. And anyhow, so those are the parameters that we, that we stuck to. So with, with that being said, we did not fiddle with the start date. We're, we're gonna, we're gonna, gonna request that, that you approve a calendar that has an August 1st start date for next year. Increased use of online learning days and the post Memorial Day expectations. You've got a side-by-side here in front of you. The calendar on the left is the one that I presented to you, the first month. I've starred and used some more technological lines drawn on this one. Apparently, apparently I did some professional learnings at the last one. But if, I'll just sort of go down in the order of these, of the order of the stars. So over in October, originally, if you go back several calendars ago, we would have two days that were half-day, early release days. That would have been the October 16th and 17th. Two half-early release days for parent conferences, kindergarten through eighth grade. The feedback we got last year was to please consolidate those. So we consolidated that into, to one day. Now we got feedback this year that doesn't like that. And we've got teachers that are, that are concerned that maybe they can't get them all done in one day. I've, I've talked with teaching and learning and talked with some principals. They believe that they can and it's already on the calendar for 23, 24 to try to do it in one day, which is next year. If, if we see that that just is not effective, we can always come back and look at that. And not only that, and this happens all the time. There are parents, because of their schedules, they make arrangements for that conference on the non-conference day anyway. That happens consistently throughout the district. And our teachers have always been very good and very flexible about trying to meet parents when parents are available. Yep, absolutely. The other thing that came in that feedback is, is originally when you see there, we had two days in the same week. The 17th was an online learning day for parent conferences. The 18th is our, is our October professional learning. One of the things that teaching and learning, Leanna and her staff have, have talked about to me throughout the year is the idea of putting learning, professional learning on a Monday where we can or at the start of the week as opposed to the end of the week so that teachers are fresh and, and quite honestly, will be more engaged than thinking about, you know, on a Friday, the only thing between me and the weekend is this professional learning. And so we went ahead and moved that October date. The thing this does for parents is they don't have two days in one week that's disrupted for families that, that are working during the week. So you've got Friday is the, is the online learning day slash conferences. And then that Monday will be the professional learning. So you can compare those two side-by-side and see the change that we made. The next one that you see, the online learning day that was a, that was a, a real source of consternation for many was having another online learning day on November 5th, which is the election day. Really felt that it was important in working with our local election board to try to, try to work with them to have, they use a lot of student volunteers. They have a lot of teachers that, that sometimes come and work with them. We also want to make, make voting available to our teachers. A lot of them can't go do their early voting because they're, they're locked into a classroom. It, it's not like a normal job that you can just kind of step out. They, they live by their bells each day. So, so we went ahead and honored the desire to move that away from an online learning day. And we just made that a student holiday. I'll show you where we, where we pick up that day. But, but instead of that being an online learning day, that's going to be a student holiday. It'll be local professional learning and a chance for our teachers to go vote or, or teachers and students to volunteer. Okay, jumping over to January, if you look at January, you can see that January 6th, a Monday, was going to be a professional learning day. A lot of clamoring about, about that from, from the feedback was that this puts a real burden on our community. They've got two full weeks off to have two full weeks plus another day when the business world all cranks back up on a Monday. Really felt it was important to have their kids back in school on a Monday. This one won't be as popular with our staff, having them come in to start professional learning on a Friday, but they really do need that day back to get their room set, to, to get some, some mid-year professional learning to kick off the school year. So we are going to ask staff to come back on Friday the 3rd so that our students can start cleanly on Monday, January 6th. Now, the trade-off in all this, by, by making the 5th a professional learning, allows us, if you look over, if you hop over to May, that allows us to eliminate the day we had after Memorial Day for teachers to have to come back. So they will with this calendar adjustment. You, you can look at the November 5th change. I would tell teachers, we couldn't do November 5th without the move that we were making in January. It's all interconnected. But by making that little concession, then they're able to be done on Memorial Day. So the community gets the win by starting on January 6th. The teachers get the win by, by not having to come back after Memorial Day. That additional student day that we lost because we, because we eliminated the online learning day earlier on, is we, we originally had had a day set up in March. We've eliminated that. The, the conferences that we were going to have in March and an online learning day in March that we were doing to sort of balance those two. We're gonna, we, we believe, again, talking with teaching and learning and some principals, they believe that the conferences that they hold in the spring are not, not nearly as populated or attended as the conferences that are done in the fall and that we could make that a local professional learning day. And thank you to Leanne for making that adjustment for us. But we'll make that a professional learning slash parent conference day. So our teachers will be there and that'll be a holiday for the kids. But we took away the 13th, which for parents would have been an online learning day. We've restored that as a regular school day. And if the math adds up, we should have, the, the result of this is we ended up with a balance of 89 and 89. So, now we've looked at it 100 times. I'm sure someone will go out there, Carl Mercer, if you're watching, will probably go out there and find a, a screw up of my math, but we, we've looked at this several times. Any questions? This will be the calendar that I would ask you next week to, to approve.
I think that you did a great job over the last couple of months trying to facilitate through the stars and the lines and you did a good job with that. I think you also took ownership on this project and you tried to accommodate everything. And I think to be fair and transparent, at least from my perspective, is that, you know, as a board member, my expectation was to start on a Thursday because of the feedback I've gotten and the fall break. And I've experienced that. And so that's my expectation. So, you know, if you feel free to say that's where the direction's coming from, please do. Because that's what I feel as a board member is very important, especially being a parent. And the feedback from local school council, from PTA, from people on District 1. I mean, that's something that I have an expectation for.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you for saying that.
And for the, the year-round school conversation, we heard it come up. I haven't heard that since late 1990s. We actually had a committee of volunteers and others that came together to talk about it. Because it is an agrarian thing and there are a lot of theories behind it. But at the end of the day, we said, no, you know, we want some summer with our kids to teach them. And so that's the way, you know, that's, discussion's been gone for 20-plus years. So I'll just put that to bed.
Absolutely.
The Thursday start, it originally seemed like, I know we did that in the North. We did Wednesday, but same thing, midweek. Especially for the kindergartners to get used to, to go five days off, you know, from never being schooled to Sunday full-time seemed like a great thing for the younger kids. But I've heard it as much from the high school that they like it just as much to kind of like, they got their syllabus done, they've got, and they can pick any schedules. So they need it at all levels, not just the little kids.
Yeah, I would submit as a, as a, as a high school principal, having those two days to get scheduling quirks worked out and to get, get all 2,600 kids, you know, situated and get the, the electives they want and have all that, that those two days are, are vital to that. Yep. Okay.
Good job.
Good job. Thank you. Good job. The next item is any future agenda items? No future agenda items? All right, go on to action items. The first item on action items is the consideration of a one-time supplement for all regular full-time and part-time employees to be paid on December payroll.
This may be my favorite recommendation I've ever made. As you know, when we adopted the FY23 budget, we did set aside some money to give our employees a one-time supplement. We wanted to take the first quarter to analyze our revenues and expenditures to make sure everything was falling in line as it should be. And, and it has. So Larry and I are very comfortable in making this recommendation tonight. So if you approve of this, as Mr. McCall said, all regular full and part-time employees would be paid a one-time supplement of $1,300 on the December payroll. And I know, speaking of, on behalf of the more than 6,000 employees in our school system, that would be very much appreciated. Is there a motion?
So moved. Second.
So moved by Ms. Morrissey, second by Mr. Cleveland. Any discussion? All in favor?
We do have some staff members here. You guys okay with that?
All right, that leaves the last item on the agenda is our executive session. Is there a motion to go into executive session for personnel?
So moved.
So moved by Mr. Cleveland.
Second.
Second by Ms. Light. All in favor? We're in executive session.
Great job tonight.
Is there a motion to come out of an executive session?
I'm in.
Second.
Moved by Lindsey Adams, second by Tom Cleveland. All in favor? All right, is there a motion to approve Personnel A, 1 through 3, B, 1 through 21, and C, 1 through 23?
So moved.
So moved by Mr. Cleveland, second by Ms. Adams.